All right, I'd like to call our village board meeting to order. You all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Morevka, here.
Jones.
Here.
Sluse.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
In your packet were the minutes from our April 26 regular village board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If there are none, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Removed by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Sluse.
Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Jones.
Present.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
And Bowden.
Yes.
Also in your packet were the accounts payable and payroll. Yeah, thank you. Payroll pay period ending 5/1/21 of $45,088.68. In accounts payable, we have general fund $38,594.77 and from the capital improvement fund $58,255.50 for a total of $96,852.77. And if you noticed in your packets, our treasurer included something that trustee Ham requested with, kind of gets a description of what every check was, so.
Very handy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice.
Provides a lot of transparency.
Yeah.
On unnecessary questions.
Right, so I will relay those comments to her. Any other questions about the bills? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve to pay the bills.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Sluse.
Ham.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
And Bowden.
Yes.
All right, next is public comments and/or questions. Would you like to speak?
Do you?
Go ahead, Angie.
Okay, so I don't have much new from last meeting, but it looks like corning's all done. I just have a few more things to check off and make sure some minor restoration and stuff are completed. We'll continue to follow up on that. Urban section, the paving is complete. And that's kind of what I have so far for engineering. Tracy's not in this week, so if there's any questions on that, I can take them back to the office and follow up. I printed some Aqua 8 flyers. I've talked about Aqua 8 a few times and about our extended payment plans. And I just, I printed off some flyers to leave at the office, but we have until July that customers can call in and get on an 18-month payment plan. And that's not something that we normally offer. It's really good for right now during COVID when people are kind of in a hard time. So I just wanted to encourage people to call into customer service if they have any questions regarding that. There are some really flexible payment plans available right now. So I just want to make sure everybody knows about that, so. And I think I emailed you the flyer last Tuesday, so. That's it for me. Any questions on that?
I just wanted to thank Aqua for supplying some of the raffle prizes that we had for the open house at the Public Works Building.
Yeah, good. I hope the event went well.
Yes.
Good, good, thank you.
All right. Scott, did you guys want to introduce yourselves during the show?
I'm Scott Johnson. I'm the business manager of the Maury's Enterprises.
I'm Maury Smith.
She owns Frankfort Bowl and Frankburg. And we're negotiating with Suzie here, Suzie Salone, to letter of intent, going through all the process right now to take over Suzie's Saloon and do some modifications and upgrading. But Maury's been Frankfort Bowl for 13 years. And if you ever get a chance to go up there and see it, it's first-class operation. It's worth taking a look, driving down to Frankfort and take a look at it. Thank you, Mayor.
Good, well, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
It's Julie.
Any other public comment? If not, we'll move on to reports of committees. We still have the engineering report.
Yes, we got a couple new projects we're getting started right now. We started looking at the Wilmington Road sidewalk project from Rath G all the way up Oriole Drive. Right now, so we picked up topography and we're checking into right-of-way documents to come up with the preliminary design and then go from there. We're also starting on the Alborn Storm Sewer Upgrade Project Design, which will upgrade storm sewers. We're in an area where in a low spot where the flooding occurs in the road that'll connect near Fourth Street, South Street, will connect to the big sewer over there. So that's just starting out design as well. And then there's also an MFT reservicing project starting out that will be on Wilson Street and North Street, just east of the railroad tracks. So that is going to be sent to IDOT soon and you can get that out to bid later in May or in June. And no update on the West Street reservicing project. We're waiting for IDOT to schedule a pre-con meeting for that, but that'll, construction with that should start in the summer. And the corning reservicing repairs were complete last week and they did the striping last week as well.
Just to update the board, you know, we had submitted the Wilmington Road sidewalk project to Congresswoman Kelly's office for for their earmark program. Unfortunately, we did not receive that. But we still have a grant request in ITUP for that project. So, you know, I still want engineers to go ahead with designing that project. And, you know, once we hear about that grant, I mean, if we don't, if we don't get that grant, I mean, you know, I know a lot of the, a few of the board members are really interested in getting that done, so we'll have to make some decisions. We want to use some of our savings to get that project completed, so. But I think, you know, it just makes sense that we, that we get the engineering done, so. See if we move forward, so. Any other questions for Troy?
Sir, budget number on that sidewalk? Is it $100,000, $200,000, million?
It's definitely not that much, but we're gonna, once we get through the preliminary design and see if we need, if land acquisition or right-of-way, and just, we want to find that out before you kind of come up with the layout. But when we looked at it in the past and we applied for the grant, I believe it was somewhere in the $200,000 to $300,000 range for construction.
Okay. So it's not cheap.
No, and that goes all the way to Oriole. And I think if we're going to do it ourselves, I think, like stopping at Gaul Landing, you know, connect to their sidewalks, at least get you out there. So that's something, but anyway.
There are options once we get into the line, so.
Do we have a look at using that old railroad that the village owns, right? Is there any way to connect that or, you know, cheapen it up versus just an idea if we were explored in? I know the angle's really bad, but just a thought.
Is it crossing or is?
Well, it does cross, because it crosses. It's not really ideal, but I just throw in that idea.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about, we met with, was it Will County?
Will County Forest Reserve.
Forest Reserve, about even like putting up, you know, starting a bike path or just, you know, put something in there so that we have it. So, I mean, you know, we are thinking about that, but I don't think it's gonna, unfortunately, really help with the sidewalk program. But it is something to think about if we, you know, as Aqua goes under 57, you know, we might want to just talk to them about mirroring a little section so that, you know, who knows if that develops on the other side of 57, that might be a way to, people could ride their bike out there or walk up there.
Sure.
Anyway, just something to think about. Anything else for Troy? Okay, we have no old business. New business, the Emmanuel Church here in town is celebrating their 150th anniversary this year. And we've got a certificate of recognition for them. It's associated with outstanding contribution to our community for 150 years. And so I'd just like a board motion to approve that.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Morevka.
Ham.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
And Bowden.
Yes.
Next is a liquor license renewal for the Vegas Cafe. They were late getting their application and so they did not get in in the last round of approvals. So everything in their application is in order at this point. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Sluse, seconded by trustee Bowden.
Sluse.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution declaring the results of the election and abstract the votes in regard to the April 6, 2021 election. You guys all have that in your packet. The, we're going to certify the winners for village president, myself, for village clerk, Karen LeClaire, village trustee for a four-year term, Shelley Morevka, Kent Ham, and Nick Sturba, and trustee for two-year term, Julie Sluse. So I need a motion to approve. That's Resolution 21-R03.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Morevka.
Jones.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
And now I need a motion to adjourn Sin. Sinai Dai? Sai Dai Dai.
Motion. Second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, seconded by trustee Morevka.
Sluse.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
And Bowden.
Yes.
All right, and next is the oath of office for newly elected officials.
Yes.
And then we'll take some pictures.
All right, we can start with you and then I can do the trustees next, because I can do them in a one-hand.
Okay.
This one is for you. If you could raise your right hand for me. I Peter March.
Hi, Peter March.
Having been appointed to the office of village trustee.
Having been appointed to the office of village president.
Sorry, village president. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
For the village of Piata.
For the village of Piata.
County of Will.
County of Will.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village president.
Of the office of village president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Excellent.
Yep.
I need you to sign one for me. And then that one is yours. And if I can have the newly elected trustees. Thank you.
Thank you.
You raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Julie Sluse.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Have been elected to the office of village trustee.
For the village of Piata.
For the village of Piata.
County of Will.
County of Will.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, I need you each to sign my copy. And I will change that appointed to elected. It's the same thing as the one in your hand is your copy.
Can you stay up here for a second? I'll get a picture of all of you together.
You want to wait until we get Karen? She's there?
Yes.
Okay. Karen? Raise your right hand. I, Karen LeClaire.
I, Karen LeClaire.
Having been elected to the office of village clerk.
Having been elected to the office of village clerk.
For the village of Piata.
For the village of Piata.
County of Will.
County of Will.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village clerk.
Of the office of village clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, I need you to sign my copy.
Okay. Can you stand over there, Karen? Can I? I've got a picture of everybody. Where are we standing to stand? Here? All right, cheers. Okay.
You are so welcome. That's my resolution.
That's my copy.
All right. Here you go.
All right.
Thank you.
Like to start the roll?
Okay, roll call. Peter March.
Here.
Amy?
You just want to.
Oh, the board, okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry if I'm doing this. Julie Sluse.
Here.
Morevka.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Nick.
Sturba? Sturba? And?
Bowden.
Bowden.
Yep, here.
All right, so that brings us to new business. We don't have on here, but I'd like Donna to come back up here. On behalf of the whole village and the board, I just want to thank you for, you know, 32 years of service. We got together, got to a little, little plaque here for your desk there. And. And.
Oh, thank you so much.
So thank you so much for all your years of service and we're going to miss you.
You bet you will.
Yeah, hopefully I keep your phone on so we can give you a call.
I'm going to get a close-up of that one, you guys, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much, Donna. Thank you. And then if I could have Wayne Parker come on up. And then Wayne, I just wanted to thank you for five years of service on the village board, plus, you know, many years on the planning commission and look forward to working with you in the future and really appreciate all you've done for the village.
It's been an honor. Thank you very much.
Okay. So next on the agenda is a request for a fence variance at 337 West Crawford Street to install a fence encroaching into the front setback. So the material for this was in your packet. And we have the petitioner here. Introduce yourself, if you just want to give us a quick overview.
I'll submit my information in the packet along with the plot survey, the legal description, picture of the house on overhead view. I have some photos of the lot itself as to where I want to put the fence. Part of the plot survey I have on my copy, I had it yellowed out as to where I want to put the fence at. I don't know if it's on your copy.
Yep.
The reason for the fence is nieces, nephews, grandchild, grandchildren, I should say. And I'd like to enclose the area because it's a little bit open. And also, there's an alley that runs behind my garage. Obviously, there's not a great deal of traffic through there, but there is a pretty steep slope. And as you get down towards the street level, going west, it's about a 35, 38-degree slope down to the street. People normally stop, I shouldn't say normally, they always stop, although they don't if they're going to bottom out their car or their vehicle. Just trying to get things enclosed and tidy up the lot.
Any questions from the trustees?
Is this going all the way to the sidewalk?
I'd like it to go all the way to the public walk, yes. On the west side of my house, yes.
So just so any of the trustees know that the, we don't, this is a corner lot, so the reason for the variance is that we don't normally allow a fence to extend into a front yard, which, because it's a corner lot, that's considered a front yard.
As you can see by my diagram, the house on the, the fence on the west side of my residence is only going to come up to the back of my porch, so there's no sightline problem with the stop sign on Crawford and there'll be no sightline for the problem on Conrad either.
So the sightline issue is the alley, correct?
The alley is the only question I figured you guys would have. If you're sitting in a mid-sized vehicle, it's only going to, it's a four-foot fence, there's a photo in the packet of the fence itself. The fence is 70%, how do I say? You can see 70% even if you look into the fence. Because the thing is, I got to pick it. So it's not a privacy fence, it's a semi-private, semi-privacy fence. And as long as you're, I mean, just a mid-sized vehicle, the only thing I believe that would have a problem is if you own a Corvette Stingray and you sit three inches off the ground with that car. Other than that, I don't see an issue with any vehicle that would be coming down that, um, alley.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
If not, I'll entertain a motion one way or the other.
I'll motion a yes.
I'll second.
It's been moved by trustee Morevka and seconded by trustee Sluse to approve the fence variance. And so you're going to go ahead and call the roll.
Morevka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Bowden?
No. Sturba.
Sturba.
Yes.
Jones?
No.
And Ham?
No.
That's three noes and three yeses. Does that make it correct? Is it right?
Yes.
So the mayor votes now.
Three noes, three yeses.
Then I vote no.
And you vote no.
No. Okay, thank you.
What was your decision? I'm sorry.
No, we're not allowing the variance.
Not going to allow the variance?
No.
Is there a possible way that, excuse me, that I can move the fence away from the public sidewalk so there is a better visual line from the alley?
That's, that's up to the board.
I would motion a yes if he decided to do that, five feet away from the sidewalk.
Wouldn't it be best to go off the back corner of the house, straight back to the garage?
That would be, what would be allowable in the code?
That's conforming.
That would be conforming. Even five feet off the sidewalks would not be conforming.
I would allow if he went off the back porch, which is 22.2.
I just have a couple of questions. I have a list of numerous residences in the village that have fences up to their public walk that are existing on corners. Some of them are six-foot privacy fences that you cannot see through, six-foot wrought iron fence, wood fence, and a stockade fence at different locations throughout the village.
So.
Again, I'm not, I understand the concern about the public walk to the west side of my residence, but again, if I could move it, you know, a foot, two feet off the public walk to assist in the sightlines coming from the alley, I have no problem with that. to assist in the sightlines coming from the alley, I have no problem with that.
What's the dimension from the sidewalk to the garage? It looks like it's less than...
It's on the plot survey.
Twenty-two point four.
That's the house, right? What, the garage looks closer.
It's the back to the alley.
It's one point...
What's the one from?
One point seven feet on the part of the garage closer.
It's approximately twenty-two feet.
Got it. Um, I said building it off the house is what we are approving right now.
I apologize, sir, I can't...
I said, building it off the back of the house is what is, you know, compliance with the code, and the board voted, you know, not to allow the variance, so that's kind of where we're at.
According to your ordinance, there's nothing in your ordinance that states anything about a corner lot being some type of exception to your rule for building a fence from up to the front of my house to the back of the plot lines and lot lines on the back and east and west in my location.
No, our ordinance does not allow fences in front yards.
It's not in front yards, sir. In front of my house, I'm not going all the way to the front of my house, it's only going to the back of my house.
A side yard is considered a corner side yard because you're on a corner, is considered, so you have two front yards, basically, and the code does not allow for fences in front yards. It prohibits it.
I don't understand this.
I know.
My house faces south, so I have a front, a backyard, and two side yards. And there are, again, there's, I have numerous addresses here in town that have side fences on corner lots.
Which could have possibly gotten variances, or have done it illegally, or other circumstances may be put in before this code was approved. So, there are different, uh, different circumstances that other areas could have. What we're doing is reviewing your variance request tonight, and it's a prohibited use to put a fence in the side yard setback. So, an allowable way for you to put a fence on that side would come, be, to come off the back of your house. So, we could...
I just stated about ten minutes ago about the fact they have no problem moving off the public walk. I just don't, I'd rather be as close as I can, but if I can't, I'm just, it makes no sense for me to put up a fence in the front and the east side of my residence when I can't put one up on the west side. I'm just trying to find out where I can locate the fence.
You can come directly from the back of your house, you can go directly north to your garage and enclose that area.
Okay, that, that, that's all I'm asking. You know, I'm looking for a location that I can put the fence, and you're not giving me that information until I just asked you.
Yes, it would be off the back corner of your porch to the...
Yes.
Yes.
To the garage, yep.
To the back of the garage, correct?
Yeah, you can go all the way to the back of the garage.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, next is item C, uh, ordinance approving the sign variance for electronic message board sign at 103 South Harlem Avenue, Drolly, Chevrolet, and Buick. So, this was approved at our last meeting, and this is the ordinance. It's gonna be ordinance twenty-one dash oh-four. Need a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Second.
Well, then, moved by trustee Jo, Jones, seconded by, or the other way around.
It was the other way around.
Trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Jones. Yep.
All right, uh, Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And Sturba?
Yes.
All right, uh, next is an ordinance amending section thirty-three dash eighty-six, Christmas Event Organizing Commission membership of chapter thirty-three of the Peatum Village Code regarding appointments. The only thing changing in this, I wanted the ability to appoint more than one board member to this committee. Uh, the previous ordinance said one board member, and we just changed it to say at least one board member. So, entertain a motion to approve that, and this will be ordinance twenty-one dash oh-five.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Maravka.
Okay, uh, Jones?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And Sturba?
Yes.
All right, next is request for partial payment for J.S. Albarico, Second Street Storm Sewer Project. Charlie, you want to give us an update?
Yes, this storm sewer project is almost complete. I believe all they have left to do, they put the dirt down and grated it. I believe all they have left to do is do the grass restoration. So, this first invoice is for the majority of the work. The, the want, the, so what's gonna remain is the restoration, and then also, there, there's gonna be an extra to the contract due to the, them being unable to find the existing storm sewer, which wasn't in the expected location. It's really deep, and it took them more time to find it and connect in a different way than was expected. So, that is gonna be included on the second invoice, so once we receive that extra, we'll obviously review it to make sure it's all justified and, um, you know, discussed with the village. But, so this first invoice is just for the, the majority of the work and also holding a five percent retention.
Any estimates on what the upcharge is gonna be?
I don't really know yet.
No?
I mean, if, nothing crazy, I, I mean, it might be five thousand. I, I don't, I don't know. We'll have to wait and see.
What was the expected depth?
The expected depth?
Yeah.
Oh, it's like, it was like sixteen or seventeen feet deep. But I think the problem was it wasn't it, um...
It was ten feet away from where they thought it was gonna be.
Right.
It'd be farther, more...
Oh, not deeper. It wasn't deeper. And, you know, you connect a manhole to a manhole for a long stretch, all, all you can do is assume that it's gonna be a straight line. In this case, it wasn't, so the pipe moved underground, which was the issue. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we entertain a motion to approve the partial payment.
Motion.
Sir, second.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Ham, seconded by trustee Jones. And that payment was for, what, fifty, what was it?
Fifty-six thousand and sixty-nine dollars.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
I'm ready. Um, Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And Sturba?
Yes.
All right, next is reviewing, accepting the low quote from Illinois Exteriors for the gutter replacement of the village hall complex. So, uh, last year was brought to our attention that the gutters were in pretty poor shape on this building, and, uh, staff got some quotes for gutters, included in your packet where those quotes. The, uh, the low, we've got three quotes here. The low bid was from a local firm, Illinois Exteriors, and so we need a motion to accept that quote and get that work done.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Sluse to accept the low bid from Illinois Exteriors for six thousand seven hundred seventy dollars.
Uh, Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Okay, we good?
I think so.
Okay, next is discussion regarding intergovernmental agreement between the county of Will and the village of Peatum for the provision of animal control services. So, right now, we do not have a contract with Animal Control in Will County. When there's a stray dog, um, our police, you know, go out there and try to round it up. You know, I think it's kind of a liability to the village. The issue is, I mean, they, they do charge, obviously, to come out. It's a hundred thirty dollars. They come out during the day, weekends, two hundred, you know, middle of the night, it's three hundred dollars to do that. And, um, you know, they charge you once you call them, you know, it doesn't matter if they catch the dog or not. So, um, it's, uh... So, what I'd like to do is at least get this contract in place so that we have the ability to call them if necessary, and then I would like to kind of refer this whole matter to the police committee to come up with some guidelines on how we want to implement this. And, uh, we'll go from there, so...
Have we had any wild animal calls in the past?
Well, I mean, when we talked to the chief about it, I mean, he gave us quite a few examples of, you know, raccoons, bats, you know...
Well, they do all that.
Yeah, you know, I mean, this all came about because of this, you know, this famous dog Cookie that roams around the village. But, I mean, it, when I heard him say how they're, you know, wrangling these dogs and rabid raccoons, I'm like, I don't think we need to be doing that. I just, you know, somebody gets bit, and so, I don't know. Like I said, I...
So, it's wild and domestic animals?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then we would have to be the ones to call.
Yes. So, if, and the way it works, from what I, you know, look on their website, so if it's outside the village, if a resident calls and they're in the county, there's no charge to the, to anybody. But if it's in the village, they want a charge to village.
But if the animal stalks in the village, then why?
So, so anyway, like I said, this is just, I'm not saying, uh, you know, we're gonna tell them to, to just call the, the animal patrol every time, but I would like us to kind of look at our ordinances, what we have already, and come up with a kind of a sane policy for public works and police, you know, to do this kind of thing, so...
Sounds good. I will make a motion to approve this.
Okay, moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Maravka.
Bowden?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
And Sturba?
Yes.
So, like I said, I want to give that to the police committee. There's some other issues police committee has to talk about, so hopefully we get a meeting set up soon. Uh, next on the giant, on the agenda is accepting letter of resignation from Raymond Hope. He's a part-time police officer in town, so I need a motion to accept that resignation.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Sluse.
Uh, Maravka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yes.
All right, uh, next is a motion to create ad hoc committee for the downtown redevelopment. We had talked about this last time. I do, we didn't get it on the agenda as an action item last time, so I need a motion to create an ad hoc committee for the downtown redevelopment. Anybody?
I'll motion it.
For a second?
Second.
Moved by, moved by, moved by trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Ham.
Uh, Maravka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
And Bowden?
Yes.
Uh, next is, uh, committee assignments. I don't think I really need board action on this, but just to give you guys a heads up, this was in your packet. Administrative Oversight Committee, Pat Bowden's the chair, Kent Ham and Julie Sluse. Public Works, Mike Jones is the chair, Nick Sturba, Pat Bowden. Members of police, public safety, Kent Ham is chair, Pat Bowden, and Shelley Maravka, members. Building, facilities and code, Julie Sluse is the chair, Mike Jones and Shelley Maravka. Uh, the downtown committee is gonna be Kent Ham as chair, Julie Sluse and Pat Bowden. The Christmas committee, Mike Jones chair, Julie Sluse, Nick Sturba, Stacy Hartwell, Steve Stein, Tammy Cowherd, and Jamie Scraven. And the police pension board, David Rock and Pat Bowden. And I will, we will be appointing the Planning and Zoning Commission at a future meeting. We want to clean up that ordinance a little bit before I do that. So, um, yeah, I'll entertain a motion just to approve those committee assignments.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Maravka, seconded by trustee Sluse.
Maravka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yes.
All right, and now I need a motion to go into executive sessions to discuss appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of a public body, and also discussion purchase or lease of real property for the use of a public body.
Motion. Second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, seconded by trustee Maravka.
Okay, Sluse?
Yes.
Maravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
And Sturba?
Yes.
All right.